All June sixteen, twenty twenty five, meeting of the North Plains City Council order at seven oh one. Right, full allegiance. I pledge allegiance. The United States. To the republic which depends on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Lori, do you please call it over?
Thank you. Chair Dumbrow.
Present.
Counselor Page.
Here.
You, Counselor Hacketon, here. Counselor McCall Wallace.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Present.
Counselor Ready, here. Mayor Goodwin.
Present.
Thank you.
Great. This time, uh, next item is full of minutes. So I'll entertain any motions or discussion on minutes.
Make a motion to approve the motion in second minutes.
I'll second it.
Approved in second is during discussion. Alright, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of approving the incentive agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Alright, this time, we have public comment. Uh, I have three in, in-house and then, uh, Lori, do you have any online?
Uh, just the one that's, well, I'm not sure there might be two. I know Linda Gallus-Merton was and Ron Bunch made it sound like he would make a public comment online, but he also provided a written comment, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so let's start with, uh, Pauline Rosado. Topic of needing more police. You can just, um, leave and resident or non-resident.
Good evening. My name's Pauline Rosado and I live in Merle Plains. I'm here to ask to get four police, especially overnight police, because we had an incident just the other day where a homeless man was at, uh, in between some cars and the place where the Chevron has the propane area. Well evidently, he must have gotten cold and he lit a fire and just had a fire going. That could have been a very dangerous situation if it got out of hand. And so I figured, we can't have this. This is happening too much, too much that there are homeless men or women coming into the, our area and camping overnight and our seniors are very vulnerable. Some of them can't defend themselves. I can, but some of them can't. And I was watching the, uh, minute, meeting, uh, for the budget committee and I was noticing that you guys were pushing for a park. And I'm thinking, wait a minute here, shouldn't we be doing something for safety instead of a park? And it wasn't until I heard Cindy Hur say, wait a minute, we need an overnight, uh, a police person more than we need somebody for, for a park. And I have to agree with her, we do. It's important because if you want growth, how are you gonna handle all of the people coming in? If you don't have a sustainable police department, fire department to, to, uh, help out with the, any situation. So I'm here to ask you guys to really think hard on what you really want for this city. Because I for one would like to see more safety than somebody in a park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pauline. I appreciate the comments. Alright, and, uh, thank you for keeping it under three minutes. Just we're here three minutes for everybody so we can get through the agenda as well. Uh, next is Mike Strom, Oregon Housing Needs Impact.
Alright, thank you, uh, for giving me time to speak. Um, I had, uh, uh, topics to comment on, but I chose just to focus on one. They're all issues are related and I think we're at a crucial juncture in our city. And it requires competent, present and functional leadership. So I'll start by, I have, uh, brought a book called Strong Towns. Are any of you familiar with this book? Do you think you have it? Yep. If you're not, I'd encourage each of you to, uh, uh, to, to read the book, get the book or read the book. While I don't, that's book, I think it's worth the time to read. For those familiar with the book, I believe you will agree that an underlying theme is that a is that by taking decisive action, a city and its citizens can shape the town's destiny and make the community strong and desirable both for current residents and for future generations. This is why I believe we currently require decisive leadership in our town. So far, I have not seen this coming from this council or the mayor. Doing nothing is not decisive, even if you don't want anything to change in our town. While the book does not explore outside political forces in depth, our little town is deeply embedded in the state political system. Boys to change the character North Plains in ways that I think many of you would find deeply disturbing. Four of you campaigned, uh, and were elected on a platform of smart growth. It is now time to do your job because if you do not have a plan, even a plan that falls short of your ideals in place before the end of year, what will happen? At the end of the year, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis will start to be implemented. I know many of you are deeply skeptical of growth. A central theme of the book is the concept of false growth. Many residents showed their displeasure with growth at the rest of referendum and the election last year, and I'm an opponent of listening to the electorate. But if you do nothing, if you do not represent the citizens of this city and provide strong leadership, then growth will be imposed from above. And I can guarantee whatever they decide to say on will be much farther from the ideal than anything you want. It'll be much further into what many of you may consider dumb growth. It will certainly, it'll be a country mile away from what our citizens voted for and what you implicitly and explicitly promised during your campaign. Don't let this happen. Uh, take charge, get to work. It does consume time for distractions or detours. Lead our little town, make us strong, help us take control of our destiny so that bureaucrats from far, far away don't decide for us. So ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the thoughtful comments. Alright, and next is Laura Dexheimer, uh, House, North Plains Food Bank. Just state your name and resident or non-resident.
Laura Dexheimer, non-resident. Um, so what we're passing out, I don't know if you guys had heard, but Patty Burns and the Senior Centers Board has decided to evict the, uh, food bank from the senior center. Even though we're supposed to be helping all the same people. Apparently that's not in her idea. So on the second page, you'll see our, our numbers. And we are now at nine hundred and seventy-one people that we feed at the food bank. Today alone, we serve two hundred and eighty-seven people. So we have until the end of August to find another location and I can't find another location. So I'm wondering if the city has a building that we can use until we are able to finally find something. I was thinking maybe the, the yellow building where the food bank used to be, if we could do that one. But, um, obviously with these kind of numbers, just alone, in seven weeks, we added fifty-six people with the North Plains address and we are now at five hundred and eighteen people with the North Plains address. And that's two hundred and four households. So obviously the food bank needs to stay in North Plains. And so I'm asking for your guys' help to help support this and to see if there's a building that we can use since the senior center no longer thinks of the food bank's important. So in the rest of your packet are, um, the emails that were between Patty and I showing that I was trying to negotiate something with her. Uh, the contract that she wrote up, I was advised by two different attorneys not to sign it because of the way it was worded. And so I need, we need a building, so. And then at the end are postcards that, um, that a lot of our people had written out of what the food bank does for them. And those were presented to the legislators for the, um, refrigerated truck, but I wanted you guys to see what people are saying and how much this does help them. So, but two hundred and eighty-seven people, that's pretty average of what we're serving every week. So.
Anything else? Uh, it's public comment, so.
Oh, okay, that's.
Thank you. Alright, and then Lori online. Do you have anybody online?
Um, yes, Linda Gallus-Merton is on.
Linda Gallus-Merton, um, you can state your name and resident, non-resident, and go ahead with your, uh, public comment.
A good evening, uh, counsel. My name is Linda Gallus-Merton. I don't know what to say about residency because we have, I'm here to represent North Plains Chapter of Strong Towns where we have residents and non-residents. Personally, I live in nine seven one three three, but outside city limits. Strong Towns was prepared tonight to draw the council's attention to the ongoing issue of the city manager and city recorder working without being bonded in violation of Oregon and municipal laws. And now the council is being willfully negligent in not protecting the city. But in our view, the issue of censure is pressing and requires immediate attention. Tonight's agenda has on it the censure of the mayor for violating, we believe, rules of decorum. This raises significant questions. First among them is who here has not violated these ill-defined rules? Rules that were quickly divined at the end of last year as the majority of the then council was leaving office. In reviewing council meetings since sixth January, we find that five of you have violated various of these so-called rules of decorum. Examples include failure to focus on the issue being discussed, keeping the discussion moving, not criticizing each other and making statements that act as questions. These rules are fundamentally flawed. If it can be violated unknowingly by any member of the council, the rule acts as nothing more than a trap. Such ambiguity undermines trust, cohesion within the governing body and presents an ineffective way to manage cities, the city's affairs. Further, you should remember that censure as a disciplinary measure is inherently limited in its impact. Once censured, that tangible con, what tangible consequences follow? None. This process seems devoid of substantive outcomes and risks distracting the council from its essential duties. The city faces numerous challenges and has a wealth of opportunities to improve the lives of its residents. Governance must be driven by a commitment to these aims rather than by infighting, jockeying for positions or political backstabbing. These behaviors erode public confidence in local leadership and detract from the ability to address real issues. While members of the council may not always like each other, they must embrace mutual respect and a shared responsibility to achieve the goals of the community. The voters have entrusted each of you to represent their needs and to work collectively with solutions.
Okay, Linda, that's three minutes. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, do we have any others?
No, not good.
Alright, and so I'm gonna, um, apologize. I made a mistake at the beginning. Um, we actually need to make a couple of changes to the agenda. So, uh, because the mayor is not present physically, uh, we need to, as plausible as consensus, move that to a future agenda item. Are we okay with that this summer conversation? Um, and then Ashley, can you come with the other one? Sorry.
Yep, uh, we'd like to add to the agenda consideration of the mayor's request to be absent from the cit, from the city for more than thirty days.
So consensus, yes, add that to the new business.
Agreed.
Okay, okay, so added. And I apologize, I should have done that in the beginning. I got, I forgot. Okay, uh, so that concludes public comment. Uh, thank you all for your comments.
Oh yeah, I wasn't sure if he submitted a written comment, so I wasn't sure if he was gonna do a, a, a vocal comment or.
Apologies, go ahead. Uh, unmute yourself, uh, name and resident or non-resident and, uh, three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, uh, Dumbrow. I live in Portland, Oregon. My name is Ron Bunch. And from, um, my perspective of forty years and I was a public administrator working in Oregon, I've worked with many city councils and some county boards and never experienced a century of elected officials. And I think I'm quite lucky for that, but there were minor disagreements, few major disputes, but these were worked out with collaboration and compromise. Now, in some instances, mediators and counselors were hired to work through differences. So chief executive, county or city managers and other staff were expected to play a big role to maintain positive working relationships. Now, the objective was to ensure within council and city boards, we all got along. And that county-city business was conducted efficiently and with integrity, the meet needs of the public were being met. Now, many people I worked with, and including myself, described this as a key part of the job, and it was not easy sometimes. Now, in my career, uh, it was emphasized that censure was to be used as a last resort to address matters that could not otherwise be resolved through training, counseling, mediation. Now, there's too much risk for censure to be used for political purposes to achieve policy objectives. It poses risks that can be costly for a government. It ruins relationships. It wastes valuable times and resources. Our recent examples are legal cases in the city of Umatilla in Walpole, Oregon. Now, censure can be warranted in some rare cases of provable, provable violation of ethical le, legal principles such as using elected and appointed office for financial gain, intentionally creating a hostile work environment, lying, theft, threats of harm, self-dealing, overtly ignoring public collection results to achieve personal objectives. Now, discipline of any kind, including censure, cannot be discretionary. One cannot discipline one person for something and not do it to others who do the same thing. Another core principle is matching the degree of discipline with the conduct. Would counseling or training suffice? Ignoring this step, in my experience, I've seen it bring on some pretty significant legal action. While censure has no legal consequences, it can be reputationally damaging and actual harm. Due process is essential. I linked a resolution from the city of North Bend, Oregon, um, that provides a really good example. Now, if council were to proceed with censure in any context, it might be useful in some limited cases. There should be a very, uh, uh, in integral process followed. And I, what as a public administrator with four decades of experience, what's really necessary is an investigation by a private neutral party. Establish independent findings of fact. Address context of possible motivations, a formal written report by the investigator regarding allegations, a structured public hearing whereby the investigator presents findings and witnesses where the accused and others have an opportunity to present evidence. And finally, a findings and conclusion. So in closing, it's recommended that the city council revisit its rules and better define when and how censure is warranted. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any others? Okay, we are good. Alright, thank you all for the public comment. And this time, we're gonna move to staff reports. Apologies. Um, so I believe first we have Robert. Did I do that right? Okay, just making sure.
Good evening, council. Um, I just wanna say how wonderful Ice Cream Social was for the library. We were so proud to represent North Plains. Uh, we had someone with us from, um, WCCLS, one of their staff joined us and passed out a lot of merchandise. And we just had a great time and it was really wonderful to see people out. Uh, we, we did ask a community question at Ice Cream Social about what are people looking forward to in the next year in North Plains? And so we have those posted up in the library, what people wrote on the ice cream cones in a display. Um, come by and take a look at that. And summer reading is going strong, a lot of great activities lined up. I just wanna give uh, big props to Brianna Swinski, our librarian, for great program planning for the summer. That's what I have, unless you have questions for me.
Yes, ready.
And I have a question to the comment. The, um, Omsi presentation was really fun. Oh, good. Wonderful. I wasn't at that one, so that's great to hear.
Thank you. See, next is police. Sorry. Thought I could make it.
Good evening. Uh, for the sake of brevity on a package agenda night, I don't have anything to add to my report, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. I mean, the reports are great, so.
Good evening, council. I also do not have anything else to add to my report, um, but open for questions.
I mean, we might have to have an ID breaker here pretty soon. This is, this is, um, I mean, I was trying to find something. I literally go through the reports and I'm kinda stuck, so I actually have one for, uh, Roland, but I don't think so. Um, well, other than, um, I'm assuming we recognize Javier in some way, like embarrass him, like really bad.
Yeah, I've got something for him on Wednesday, so.
Alright, I, I might swing by just to have fun. That's great. No, I mean, I'm kinda sad, but I'm glad he's moving on to the next thing, but it's not fun when people leave. But that's what we do here. Great job. Thank you. Alright, Rowan.
She is on, if you have any questions.
Uh, Rowan, anything to add before we go to questions?
Uh, no, nothing to add for the staff report. Any questions are welcome.
Counselors?
I have a question.
No, I was expecting it. Go.
Um, Rowan, in your, uh, very detailed report, thank you, you commented that there's a trend in, um, general code complaints. I was wondering if you could have a bar on some of the trending areas that you've been, um, kinda triaging?
Uh, yes, there's been a increase in code complaints of all, uh, varieties this spring, summer. Um, mostly to do with, uh, trees and the state of the, the trees in the city. Um, we've had some dead trees. We've had some trees that people would like to remove. Um, so that's been something we have been attentive to. We've also had some complications, uh, that I detail in my report. Um, industrial uses next to residential areas and mediating that relationship. Those are the majority of the concerns.
Both my questions, thanks a lot. Anything else?
I just wanted to ask really quick, uh, about trees, if I may.
Absolutely.
So la, last city council meeting, we're talking about people complaining about trees and sometimes they would fall and the city was working as the, uh, the intermediary between them. And there's some work on code about the trees. Wasn't so much about how, how they are anything like that, just pretty much if we cut a tree down, you gotta plant a new one. That's kinda weak, in my opinion. Is there, is there something that we could do to make it stronger? Like something about tree maintenance, perhaps?
Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Page. Uh, we were, uh, pursuing previously a broad code update to the land use regulations through the TGM Code Assistance Program. Unfortunately, we were not selected for that program and this was where we were hoping to address the question of trees in a more comprehensive manner. Staff is currently considering a tree policy or a small tree code update to, uh, patch this issue, so to speak. Um, but we are not considering a comprehensive update at the moment due to, uh, staff having other priorities. Um, it may be something that the planning commission is interested in taking up, um, and providing us direction to make that a higher priority later in the year or early into next year. Uh, right now, we are looking to get something done quickly to clarify some of the most important protections such as not taking down healthy trees and making sure that trees are replaced if they are taken down.
Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll talk to Bill about maybe the city, uh, uh, about, about the, about the planning commission probably doing that. Having the city being involved in a lot of, you know, arguing back and forth between, uh, neighbors could be alleviated, uh, could be, uh, alleviated if he has some good rules in place, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, a few things we don't want to talk about bringing forward to the council after we got through all the residents and, uh, uh, more tree policy updates. So, and I hear that's what you're speaking about, Ron. Do you know when, uh, when we could expect to see that at the council level?
Uh, at the council level, it will probably be a few months before you see that. We are working through some other things at the moment. Um, but is on a priority for our so, summer task list. Uh, I would expect you to see that probably sometime in September.
Okay, true. That's very good.
Last question. Um, can you please, um, hum a bar about the new dog park, um, in Sunset Ridge and where we're at? Um, dispositioning the current status of it?
Of course. Uh, we became aware of the issue on Monday evening and began working with the HOA and residents on Tuesday of last week. Um, we've been working, uh, together with the HOA to gather information about their intentions as well as the residents, um, have, uh, given us a quite a good bit of information about the activities. We are currently working with the legal team with Chris Kreen, um, to understand where we stand in terms of the allowable uses of the property, the easements and access over the property, um, as well as other jurisdictions which may be interested, including Clean Water Services, who has a full access over the property, and Hellsborough School District with their shared border to the property. Um, so that's an ongoing investigation and we are hoping to wrap it up quickly and get back to the HOA and the residents in a timely manner.
Okay, good answer. Anything else? Thank you, Rowan. Well done.
Um, thank you.
And Ryan on, or Three J, is it Brian?
Brian.
Ryan, sorry.
I, I, I think he's not, no.
Okay, so do you have any questions for Three J? I could, I'll just answer, answering. They'll be incorrect when we lose the report, you know. No, I just email, email. I didn't find anything that was, I thought was substantive, but I don't know. Other people may have. So any comments on the Three J or the engineering, Three J stuff? Um, so now we move on to Chris' favorite part of the night, resolutions. So I'm gonna turn over to Phil so he can walk us through how without the budget.
Yeah.
Which I know he's been just up in the needle.
Small favorite resolution over the two years, as a matter of fact. Thank you very much.
I like to set you up a little bit.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I really do. Um, okay. So, um, we have a series of resolutions before you this evening, all required by state law to get us, um, in shape before July first with all of the statutory required adoption of um, selection, uh, approval of a property tax rate to eleven, um, within the range that we're allowed. We should add, and then, um, uh, qualifying for and accepting, um, station revenue, state share revenues, um, from the state which go into our general fund and fund all the, get split up and, and fund all the different general fund departments like library and police and that sort of thing. So the first resolution, um, this evening is twenty-three oh nine for your consideration. Um, resolution twenty-three oh nine is officially, uh, would be official adoption of the North Plains Budget Committee approved biennial budget. Um, the North Plains Budget Committee actually met four times, um, over the past several weeks. The first time was, um, of course, just, just kind of go over what a budget committee does, orientation, and then talk about some priorities and things going into the budget. But the three meetings, um, that the budget was officially released on May eighth and then the budget committee met three times um, to consider a variety of things that led to approval of the budget with some, um, revisions from what was originally proposed, but the budget committee um, met on the, um, fifteenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth, all Thursdays in May. On the twenty-ninth, budget committee unanimously approved the budget with some, uh, robust discussion about, um, adding a police officer, um, for, to, to enable some overnight coverage during, um, during the week. Um, as well as, um, you know, enhancing services in a few other places. Um, but anyway, so, but the budget committee went, oh, went over all this and as your staff report Um, but anyway, so, but the budget committee went over, went over all this, and as your staff report mentioned, um, they. Approve, they approved the budget, but they sent to city council, all of you being there, as budget committee members. Um, with the request that with adoption of the budget. As approved, to um, basically to explore, work with the community on how to pay for, better pay for in a more sustainable way. Pay for police services um, as population. Grows in the uh, in the community. Um, we have the, one of the lowest property tax rates that we're able to charge under Oregon State. Under Oregon Property Tax Law um, in Washington County. Um, we don't have a local option levy here. Um, to fund that, like some other communities do, and um, there are other ways of, of, of funding different services as population grows. But the charge uh, from the budget committee was, um, you know, you take up a process to work with the community on better understanding. Public safety needs, the need to staff up public safety police officers. And given that public safety is one of the more expensive things that the city provides on a per officer basis, or generally speaking. It's particularly important um, to figure out the budget committee charge. It's particularly important to figure out how to, how to more sustainably fund that service. Um, as population growth. So, so before you is the resolution twenty-three oh nine. Um, for your consideration for adoption, and it would simply be a discussion and move to. Move to adopt and standard procedures. It's just a resolution.
Okay, so um. So councillors, I'd like to open the floor for discussion or motions or whatever you want to do.
I would like, sorry if I jumped in. I'm on uh, I'm at Disneyland right now, so uh. I don't have my general, I have my usual office, it's pretty nice. This one, I'm in a suite, but it's not that sweet. So I'd like to state the uh, three recommendations that the budget committee has. So it's out here. It's on the, it's on the writing bus, so people at home could, could uh, play along. Uh, the city council should acknowledge the long dependence upon resources from the water fund to supplement the general operations. A practice which must come to an end by the close of fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. The second is, city council should identify a fiscally strategic. Uh, specifically to significantly shift city services funding along with any new city strategic vision. Are taken by the city. And thirdly, the city council should add a, the fourth full-time equivalent deputy with a Washington County Sheriff's Office. Contract amendment only when a sustainable funding for the expense is identified and adopted to pay for it. So that was what came out of our budget. As far as recommendations go.
Any other comments? See a question, Rowan. Um, all right, well, I'm gonna ask a question. Uh, Bill, can you expand on the first one about the, we need to give her the. You think what council, so that we have that.
Yeah, sure. Um, so as far back as I'm aware of. Um, and just, you know, I've been at the city for a little over five years and kind of digging back into the history of budgets and the city. Um, general fund and providing services, services to the community. Over time and for a very long time, the city's very low property tax rate has really kind of. Been something that has not funded the services that the community likes in terms of, you know, what it has and the services that have grown. Police officers, library, parks and, or you know, events, that sort of thing, all the things that they associate with, with city services. And over time, that property tax rate has been sublimiting, and there's been no significant drive to try to pass. Or, you know, seek and pass a local option levy. Um, the community has chosen to stick with that low property tax rate that it's allowed to have. And then over time, increase paying for more by using funds from the water fund. Um, and for a long time, it was actually. Um, it, you know, it's varied over the years, but the water fund and the revenue that is charged for using water. Uh, buying water, using it residence businesses, that sort of thing. Um, that, it's an enterprise fund, and so the city can use that, that water revenue, kind of how it sees fit. There's no, you know, if it needs to supplement funding or do something special, it can, there are no restrictions on what the city does with that water revenue in the code. It's just a second revenue stream, major revenue stream besides property tax revenue. And so over time, as that property tax rate. Has been limiting, increasingly limiting in terms of what it can do, um, even with growth. The water fund has been utilized as a source of revenue to help supplement um, service levels of the city, and it's been going on for a very long time. Um, but we're at a point now where in the next two years, the water fund can no longer bear the brunt of, of that. That transfer, that, that supplementing of the general fund. Um, we, this budget reduces what were very large reserves in the water fund, kind of just, you know, waiting and. Helping our bond rating and, and waiting around uh, being held in reserve in case there was a major. You know, a new infrastructure need, that's, or you know, a replacement, a major replacement. Um, so this budget does draw some, draw those, those reserves down some. But after two years' time, the water fund will not be in a situation of being able to continue to do that. So. There's a, basically a two-year clock started with adoption of this budget. Um, to, to figure out a, um, a transition away from that over a two-year period.
Okay, thank you. That's what I think you were trying to plug me down.
Yes, sir. I have, well, not questions, but comments. Um, this budget process, I understand, is very highly complex. Um, really, one, two, if you want to get some gray hairs, probably a good way pathway. Uh, but I think there's two concerns that I'm still have that I've been kind of conflicted with. Um, and one is approving this budget with net new um, services that we're assuming in this budget. We're still waiting on the outcomes of our budget, of our audits, right? And so that makes me, gives me a little pause. My other concern is the prioritization of, um, so we had several net new services that we threw into the budget. Um, but also, but prioritizing um, other headcounts such as the program manager role. With a determinant funding path as opposed to um, police, that kind of concerned me as well too. I just wanted to voice those two concerns that gave me current pause.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to speak to that. Um, you know, it's a difficult place to be in trying to figure out what to do when the city has chosen not to increase the funding. Um, so the city has chosen to maintain a low tax rate and yet want some resources. Um. It's, that is challenging, and I think it, yeah, I have the gray area, you can tell. Um, so, um, one of the things that, that uh. That question that we bounce back and forth in terms of paying for a position, essentially a person who is going to be doing certain services in the city. Um, it increases areas where it can be revenue producing. Um, it's one of the pathways to revenue producing in terms of. Management and growth of Jesse Hall, Newtage, um, better communication in the community. And, and then starting to create programming services that can also generate revenue. Um, not that there, it, we, it's called Parks and Rec. But it's not necessarily a parks person, you know, who you think is out there throwing the ball around for kids. That's not the job. Um, so I think that's, that's a challenge, because I also understand the issue in terms of the police and bringing that on. However, this position and the police position are not an equal position, and I think that's important to remember. It doesn't fund, one does not fund the other. They're not one, they're not interchangeable. Um, so you can't take away one and fund the police position with it. Um, and also sustain that position. But I also think if the city needs to be looking towards how we are going to grow revenue. In the small ways that we can do it internally.
Let's start calling people now. Councillor, I think we're good.
And I'm uncomfortable with approving any budget without up-to-date audits. Um, I also realize we're on a tight deadline. And I will move forward with the approval, but I strongly advocate that we come up with a deadline for our audits and financial statements to be up to date, to gain public trust.
Thank you, Councillor Pfeifman.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, and maybe this is a question for Phil, uh, but if you can walk me through. Because it's my understanding that the audits, um, you know, are already in place. Everything has already been essentially dotting your, your i's, crossing your t's. Um, and this is essentially a checkpoint within the budget system. Um, so regardless of the outcome of the audit. What kind of financial impact could this have? If, let's say, let's just say wildly, worst-case scenario. A, something outlandish came out of the audit. Uh. And I'm just trying to think through for the purpose of, of approving this budget and what that could look like.
Um, so, from a budgeting perspective, the audits, uh, you know, any audit, any particular year, it basically just. You know, it does a couple of things. Um, it just makes, checks and makes sure that all of our procedures from internal controls. To how we handle accounts payable and how we do things is appropriate. And following standards. And then the other thing that it does is it basically just kind of goes through and verified some of the math that. That end, that, that starts with a verified previous year audit, beginning fund balance for all the different funds that we have. And then make sure that, you know, that what we're reporting um, ends up with an accurate ending fund balance, and that ending fund balance audit and becomes the. Next year's beginning pen now. Um, and basically, the twenty-two audit, the update on that is that um, our audit consultants have identified where. Um, kind of the last remaining questions were about just verifying where the money came from for the playground out here. And, and the contract on that and getting the details in it and making sure that we, we were reporting properly which year expenditures happened. Because we got the grant, I believe, from the state in um, early twenty-two. The project began um, towards the end of FY twenty-two. And there was, but there was some expenditure into twenty-three, and so making sure that those numbers were properly attributed by year based. So, but all the numbers have been reviewed, auditors have reviewed our process. There shouldn't be any, you know, substantial significant. Um, you know, identification of any errors that would have a, a market impact on the budget. So I, you know, we have the auditors who have been reviewing what's been done so far. We have our financial consultants who have reviewed what we've done. Put it together into financial statements and worked with the auditors on kind of putting that together. Um, and understanding where things are. So it's, we're not handing over a black box of information the city's been doing to the auditor and saying, okay, figured out. Is everything okay? That's not, it kind of goes through a multi-step process that includes financial consultant review by former municipal auditors. And then auditors checking, basically just second checking the math. So we're kind of at that last stage on the, on the very last items, but. But that's the, the um, the ARPA fund. Everything else is pretty much done. It's just this playground and the money and, and. What we spent in twenty-two, FY twenty-two versus spent in FY twenty-three. So it shouldn't have any, I, I wouldn't anticipate any. There've been no red flags or questions raised by either of those firms looking at these numbers.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that at this point, the auditors would have signals. Hey, heads up, there is a large discrepancy, yada, yada, yada.
Uh, cor- correct. Um, i- if, I, I feel that if, if there was anything significant that needed to be flagged, it would have been done one before now. And this is the very last project that we have that had expenditures in more than one year, and because it's federal ARPA dollars. It's federal money being spent, and that's a particular, that's a particular case of needing to be very careful about putting expenditures attributed in the proper year. And so that's been the emphasis of this very last. Part of the process.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I think just, you know, I think everyone here has really encompassed, you know, the, the general consensus of how we're feeling about the budget. I think the last thing I would just add is just wanting to be sustainable, and so while we might be able to flip a switch and make numbers look. Like it'll be balanced on paper for this biennium, the next biennium, that could look very different, and. You know, my understanding is that we're not talking just one less FTE for sheriff. It's, it's city staff. It is bare bones. Um, and so that is my concern of adding a, a police officer this biennium, but not being able to sustain it. Without a clear revenue plan, plan going forward, so.
Thank you, councillor. Um, so I'd like to. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Page, please.
Oh, well, thanks for uh, I'm not in real, I'm normally more, more forceful talking than uh, raising my hand, but I am remote. So uh, a lot was, was discussed, there's, there's two concerns about an, an audit being done, which hopefully. Being told a bunch of times that it's no problem should help out with that. I just wanted to make everybody understand that this budget works. However, if you do want more police officers or specific things spent on, we need to figure out other revenues to uh, to do that. Revenue streams. Our budget works for this next two years, going forward with inflation and the price of people. And our taxes being flat, and us not having a big enough population to really support any kind of business at all. Uh, it's going to be really tough. So one of the things like extra police officers, we got to figure out a way to focus on that. Having a water bill keep on creeping up. Is poison. I think that's something we should not do. We should focus on, if we want to spend more money, we have to address those issues. And actually do that. So, with that being said, oop, my, my uh, other screen died. Uh, I guess back over here again. Cool. I'm prepared to make a motion if, if our discussion is done.
Hold, hold on, I just want to make one comment, and then then I'll let you make your motion.
Right on.
Uh, my, so, so here's my, I agree, yes. Um, the audits I'm less worried about because um, I've been through that on the corporate side enough times. That I kind of know where we're going with the audits, but I understand the concerns, and I, I agree, we want to make sure that everything is, is wrapped up neatly. My concern is fun. Um, I hope everybody else is one. Um, and so what? I think we're gonna have to start having some hard conversations as a city about what matters. Um, and some of those conversations are gonna involve, if you want more services, whether that be police, parks, more library, more. Roads, you got to pay for them. And if anybody knows me, you know how much I hate taxes. That is my worst thing, and I'm finding this thing with everything I can. But I also don't like lying to myself or anybody else, and I think we need to have an honest conversation, and so my suggestion is. I mean, I, I support the budget, but I think what we should do, my opinion, as one person is. We should ask the budget committee to look at, or, or whomever, to, to give us some suggestions and figure out a way to have a permanent funding. A permanent way of funding somebody's things. In my opinion, and again, this is one person, so I'm just throwing it out there. Is that we should consider whether we pause, approve the budget, but pause on the hiring of the parks person. And, or the park program manager and the police officer until we have solidified the funding thing. That would make me personally feel better. If I know that we have a long-term strategy, because councillor Pfeifman and uh, councillor Page have both talked a lot about needing long-term funding. And I put a lot of thought into that, and I think there's a lot of wisdom there, and I don't have an answer for what that is. But I think if we can get some wise councils and good advice on, on some things that could work, and we are gonna probably need to put that in front of the voters. And we probably need to have some awkward and honest conversations with, with the voters and with ourselves on what is the biggest priorities. Um, that would be my suggestion. And how, how that works, I mean, maybe that's we send it to budget committee, maybe we send it to a separate committee. However, that works, I think that's something to be figured out, but that would be my suggestion. So with that, if there's nothing else, I'll turn back to councillor Page for his motion. I just wanted to suggest that. Oh, sorry.
If we wanted to proceed with your suggestion, would we then amend this proposed resolutions reflect that language?
You'd have to.
Yeah.
And I find my positive hiring. I find positive spending until we get it figured out. I think that's responsible, and uh. Our city takes pride in low taxes and gets things on, on like a, like a shoestring, so let's do that.
All right, councillor McCall, also, councillor Phegan.
So I'd like to, um, um, if we were going to do that, and I'm on offense about that, because if I see one of the revenue generating. And a communications issue, which is a sorely needed issue in this community, um, I think tonight's meeting is evidence of that. Um, so. With that, I would like to say that we have a point where we're suspending that for a year to look at it, so that at the mid. Point of this biennium, we then are relooking at that, because we still need to move forward. So whether we're having town hall meetings to talk to people about what they want, whether we have committees. Because we still need to move forward. So whether we're having town hall meetings to talk to people about what they want, whether we have committee people looking at that. We still need to be growing during this two years and not just waiting for.
Um, real quick point, oh, sorry, go with Bill.
I'm gonna respond to Council McCall, I just wanted to. Throw some two cents in.
Please. Um, yeah, go ahead, and then I'll clarify and we'll go back to Council Page.
So um. On the topic of. Pausing, having somebody. Uh, adding the program supervisor position. Um, the lever that you have available is to. Direct staff not to bring you a job description that you have to approve before I can even hire and spend money. This budget. Approves. The position to happen sometime in two years with money for it. But I still have to come to you with a job description that you might want altered. And you have to approve it before I can even go out and hire and spend money on that person. So by authorizing the budget, you are not authorized, I don't, I still don't have the ability to go out and have the person. So there's still some steps involved. Um, and so I I would encourage you. Um, to handle that dilemma that way, because there's still a lever of control for you all before any money goes out the door on that.
It just authorizes that spending could occur within those two years, not that it has to occur.
And Council McCall, so that. Speak to what you were saying. I just want to clarify, that's what you were looking. Uh, Council Paganor and then Council uh Page.
I'll pass. I think that you're you're summing them here. Uh, addresses makes them fair.
Super hopeful, yeah.
Um, I would like to see though, if we we have a lot of net new um factored and baked into this, I would like to have that prioritization. Conversation, uh, it's one of my favorite words. And then if there isn't a standard ROI assigned with one of these headcounts, let's let's throw that those numbers on a paper too and. And that would be even helpful.
Perhaps as a future staff report when the time's appropriate.
Yeah, show us the show us the money.
Show me the money. Uh, Council Page, if you have a comment?
Yeah, Bill's solution also solves the problem with having to take things back to the budget because it's five percent. So. We are good with Bill's suggestion. So I think a motion stands the way it way it is. So let me make it.
Okay.
I moved to, I moved to approve resolution twenty three oh nine to adopt the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven biennial budget. And make appropriations with acknowledgement. For the North Plains Budget Committee's three fiscal recommendations.
All right, I have a motion on the table. Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, you're hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of, do I need to read a little thing? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion to pass resolution twenty three oh nine, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Go ahead, close. Do I need a voice vote? This is good with the. Okay, I just want to make sure, I don't want to miss the vote, it was important one.
Did the mayor vote or is this, is is the mayor abstaining or?
She's abstaining, correct. She's abstaining uh on all the. Uh, yeah, on all the resolutions per email that we received earlier today.
Okay, so she's just on the uh this meeting to be kind of as a as as attending the meeting, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so now we are moving on to twenty three zero four, so. Uh, Bill, I mean, well, you talked about this, was there anything else you wanted to talk about about the permanent levy rate?
Yeah, I, no, but uh, thank you, Council President, um, property tax. So we're now we're really in your. Your favorite territory. Um, no, just it is. Along with adopting a budget, um, actually annually, whether or not it's a budget adoption year, a city has to, uh, city council has to authorize levying the property tax. At the chosen rate within the range of of kind of the what what can be um levied under measure fifty. And resolution twenty three or four, if um adopted, basically levies the same property tax rate we the city does every year, every year. Um, which is the most that it can under measure fifty, but it's still a very low tax rate in the county and that's. Two dollars um, two dollars and seventeen one two cents, so two dollars seventeen cents is what is the tax rate. The Budget Committee, when it moved to approve the biennial budget, they also moved to to for council, moved to approve that property tax rate again. So it would be the same tax rate as what people have seen on their. On their tax bills for quite a few years now.
Any discussion?
It is the minimum, so we like that.
Yeah. We do like that. All right, any other comments or any motions? Don't make Council Page make public, it's gone guys.
I know, I'm, I'm gonna do it. I'm doing it. I moved to approve resolution twenty three oh four to declare a. Two dollar seventeen point one two, sorry. Two point one seven one two per one thousand dollar taxable assessed value. At veranium tax levy. For fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
All right, motions. On the table, any uh, go here second.
Second.
Okay, Council Higginon, second, any discussion? Hey, no discussion. Uh, all those in favor of passing resolution twenty three oh four? To declare a two dollar and seventeen point one two cent for one thousand taxable assessed value? Say aye.
All right.
All opposed? Hearing non-motion carries unanimous. All right. So next.
Okay, is that is that unanimous? Let it be known that the mayor is uh by is by proxy, not saying anything? And she just wants to abstain.
She's just abstaining.
Yeah, so there's an abstaining vote.
All right, twenty three oh five and six, Bill.
Thank you, uh, Council President. So um, twenty three oh five and twenty oh twenty three oh six resolutions um. Uh, go hand in hand. They are um, uh, two resolutions basically that get adopted every year prior to the new fiscal year. Um, the city receives a sizable amount of revenues from the state, from things like the statewide marijuana tax and liquor tax, that that sort of thing. And the city um elects to receive those revenues on a per capita basis, like pretty much every other city in the state does. And then we take those monies and they go into the general fund and they get split up to pay for police and library and and every basically everything in general fund gets. Um, some split of those monies we get from the state. Free money. I mean, I would just say no, but you know, it's policy decision, not mine. Um, so there are two, um, there are two resolutions that have to be passed in order. The first one, twenty three oh five. Um, is where the the resolution declares we provide city services. There are there are different service services considered. City services that we provide and that qualifies us for the shared revenues. So that declaration is twenty three oh five, and then after you consider and adopt. We'll come back to twenty three oh six, which says, yes, state, we will receive those monies. So we but we have to do it in two different resolutions.
Okay, so any discussion? Does anybody disagree that we will provide these services?
Let her rip.
All right. Motion. Council, ready?
I move to adopt resolution two three zero five. Certified the provision of municipal services that establish the eligibility of the city of North Plains. To receive shared revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
I'll second.
All right, Council Payton, second. So we're gonna go to a roll call vote? Lori, can you do a roll call?
I can.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President Dumbrow.
Aye.
Council Page.
Aye.
Council Hagedorn.
Aye.
Council Reading.
Aye.
Council Payton.
Aye.
Council McCall Wallace.
Aye.
And Council and Mayor Goodwin is abstaining. What can we get a confirmation? Mayor Goodwin, are you abstaining?
She says she'll log on but not be responsive. Because of medical issues.
She's. Okay.
So.
We'll record her as a abstain.
Mayor, are you abstaining? Would you clarify? Okay.
I just have it, so six, six.
Yep.
I and one extension. Okay, um, and now twenty three oh six.
Um, I'll very quickly turn it back to you all. This resolution would. Let the state know we'll receive those revenues based on qualifying to be able to get them, um, if you adopt this resolution.
Council McCall, us.
Here, I'll move to adopt resolution one two, resolution two three oh six to select to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay, Council Reading, seconds. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Yep.
Okay, Lori, can you roll call?
Council President Dumbrow.
Aye.
Council Page.
Aye.
Council Hagedorn.
Aye.
Council Reading.
Aye.
Council Payton.
Aye.
Council McCall Wallace.
Aye.
And Mayor Goodwin is abstaining.
I will. Give her opportunity, but if she doesn't respond, then she'll be abstaining.
Six eyes, one extension, motion carries. Okay, now we're on to twenty three oh seven. The Master Fee Schedule Update and Adoption Bill, I'm gonna. Give it right back to you.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, thank you, Council President. Twenty three oh seven, uh, every year. Um, this tends to be the last budget money-related resolution that council considers and um and adopts. Uh, matter of whatever discussion it might have. Um, that enables the city to basically charge for pretty much everything, not taxes. Um, during the course of the fiscal year, starting on July one. Um. So this is everything from what developers, if they walk in the door or builder walks in the door and wants to do a, you know, a subdivision or what have you. To how much folks pay for their water. Um, to how much it costs to get a permit to do an event, to I mean, everything, anything we can charge that isn't a tax, basically, okay? Um, so uh, that's everything on the schedule. A few comments about um how much costs are going up. Um, most of the fees, um, the vast majority of the fees in in the fee schedule go up by C P I. And C P I this year was actually only two point one percent. So uh, by adopting this master fee schedule for F Y twenty six. The great majority of the fees are only going up for folks by two point one percent. Though there are some exceptions and I'll I'll talk about them um that are notable. Um, but. But the vast majority of the fees honestly on the schedule aren't paid paid by residents, a lot of them are S T Cs and this, that and the other. Um, so most of them are going up by two point one percent of this schedule because we we do that with C P I. The big notable um. Change in on the fee schedule that affects existing residents and not, you know, development and and people not here yet, the people who are living here now. Were water fees. So the water fee schedule, when we charge businesses and residents, this actually has two components. There's a base fee that no matter how much water you charge, you. Kind of pay a solid base fee. And then based on however much water you use, there's a usage fee. That's set so that if you use less water, you pay less. And if you happen to use a lot more water, you know, the 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 rate, the rates are set so that you're you're rewarded for being water efficient, basically. But um, so the base fee is one of those that's going to go up by C P I in this schedule, in this fee schedule. But the water we get, we get our water wholesale from the Joint Water Commission as managed by the city of Hillsborough. And the Joint Water Commission um Board approved. A four point one five percent increase in wholesale water rates. So this fee schedule covers that cost by assuming the same four point one five percent. Increase in our usage water rates to match what J W C. Um, is is charging for their increase. So that's the, that's probably the notable. Rate difference, you know, increase in cost for the new fiscal year. Um, that's different from C P I for the vast majority of things that that people will pay, residents will pay during the course of the year. Um, the other big things that that really are different, um, different rates would be like. S T Cs, I think the big, I think the big change would be our our transportation S T C. And our transportation development tax, which is actually a county. Uh, approved tax, and then we charge it on new development and keep the money here for projects. Both of those methodologically are set by however much the county is, is the T D T, the County Board of Commissioners. And they approved an eight point three percent increase. In the transportation development tax for fiscal year twenty six. So that means that our. T D T goes up by eight point three percent in this schedule. But our tra- but our own transportation system development charge that we, the other transportation related impact fee that we charge. To new developments. By method, by adopted methodology, that also goes up by eight point three percent, but that's paid for by, you know, builders or whomever comes and build a new home. That's not some something a resident pays every month or what have you. So those are kind of the big notable differences in the fee schedule, the rates that are going up, inflation by two point one. When last year, C P I went up by three point seven. Um, and then the big rate increase was for transportation system development charge, T D T. Um, and then the top, the top is a street fee as well, and that methodologically is the T D T. Those are eight point three percent, but that's singly the biggest. Rate increase that we saw handed that down to us from a different agency.
Counselor? Council Page?
Nothing.
Anybody? All right.
It's time to read the schedule.
Yeah, I know, I was, I spend much time in like.
I wasn't, I'm impressed you used the word.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Unless there's more common.
What else?
One day, one.
Oh. Uh, actually, it's on bid one thirty three.
I move to adopt resolution twenty three oh seven to update the city of North Plains Master Fee Schedule effective July one, twenty twenty five. I second.
I'll second it.
You've been seconded three times. Lori, can you do a roll call first, please?
Thank you. Uh, Council President Dumbrow.
Aye.
Council Page.
Aye.
Council Hagedorn.
Aye.
Council Reading.
Aye.
Council Payton.
Aye.
Council McCall Wallace.
Aye.
Mayor Goodwin. Will abstain.
And six uh, eyes and one extension, motion carries. Okay, um, I'm going to say, let's take. Two minutes, three minutes, and uh, so please be back in your seats. Uh, let's call it eight, ten, and we'll take a brief recess and then we'll get on to uh reports. Council, city manager and council report. Hey, we're back in session. And the next item on the agenda is uh, city manager report, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. So um. I have two items I want to cover. Um, the first, what I want to do is is the topic of the city manager surety bond. Um, and you all got some communication from Ashley by way of um our company doing the surety bond. But I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley because she procedurally just wants to make sure. Um, she understands where you are. Um, so that we know for sure how to cinch. Which the the situation, so I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Okay, um, so for the council's recollection, um, the city previously had code language that required the city manager to have a. Surety bond with a value of twenty five thousand dollars. The city removed that language and instead left the bond mouth open ended. At the time that that change was made, the discussion was about fact that the amount was be determined based on council. Uh, determined by the council based on a recommendation from our insurance provider. So we've been um, we've been looking into options for the surety bond. I've been working with assured partners to um to answer questions from the council and to present options um to you all. So I got some options back um from our insurance agent. Um, with bond limits and premiums, I sent them to you guys over the weekend. Um, essentially, their recommendations for their amounts are from twenty five thousand dollars, which is a premium of eighty seven dollars. All the way up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is a premium of eight hundred and seventy five um dollars. So what I would like to discuss with the council tonight is if. All of your questions have been answered through um through this work, if we're ready to move forward with a surety bond and what level. Um, would the council like to see? So the recommendations, the recommendation from our insurance provider is that um essentially all of these amounts are reasonable. Um, again, like, we don't have a lot of experience with surety bonds because they're not very common throughout the state of Oregon. Um, but essentially, when you're looking at a city the size of the North Plains with a budget amount size that you have. Um, all of these are reasonable, anything above that would be extremely unusual. For the city of the size of North Plains, and so her recommendation is um a bond of a hundred thousand dollars, given the size of the city. And knowing that you also have prime coverage through C I S.
Ashley, can you, can, Ashley, can you, can you go through the the three levels again? What three amounts are there?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There's the three quotes, which ones are they for?
So we have a quote for a twenty five thousand dollar um bond limit and the premium is eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. A fifty thousand dollar bond limit for a hundred and seventy five dollars. A hundred thousand is three hundred and fifty dollars. And two hundred and fifty thousand is eight hundred and seventy five dollars.
All right, I'm gonna uh, my opinion is this, I can't instruct everybody to do anything because I'm just one guy. All right, I'm gonna uh, my opinion is this, I can't instruct everybody to do anything because I'm just one guy. However, go for the a hundred thousand dollar one. And let's stop spending resources on this. That's my opinion, and again, do it immediately. Is my, is my two cents.
Okay, because this has been a. Ongoing question, um, I'd like for everybody to speak up, so I'll just go one by one, if that's okay, Counselor Redding, what are your thoughts?
Um, I agree with uh, Counselor Fage of the hundred thousand one. Um, with the presentation we received from the insurance um, company before. That uh, it was clear that it is redundant. Um, and we also agreed that we would go forward this time and then look at it in August. In terms of whether we wanted to keep that in code or not, um, I think it's reasonable to do the recommended hundred thousand as well.
I'd like to read the recommended report with a hundred thousand. So a hundred thousand.
Okay, um. Can we add this to the agenda now, or can we?
So with this direction, um, the bond has to be approved by the City Council, should enter code, so it's going to come back onto your. Agenda next time for final approval, and you'll see the bond with the recommended amount from the.
Oh, perfect, yeah, and I would, I, sorry, I was gonna say, I, same thing, I just want to make sure the next procedure, so. I think we have consensus, but Counselor Wallace.
Well, we've had some community concern with this, it's come up a few times, and um, there is some concern that it's. It's being dragged by the uh, city manager in terms of getting it done, uh, which hasn't been the case, sometimes it's on one person's desk or another, but it's not. The city managers, um, can we be reasonably assured that it would be here for the next meeting, or are we looking at a month out?
So the next meeting is in two weeks?
Yep.
Yep. So all I have to do is let Alicia know the amount that we have decided on, and she puts together the bond and sends it over.
Right.
So. As long as that happens, we're good to go, and any delay on this item was because it is unusual, Alicia and I don't work on them very often, I had a substantial amount of questions of the form of the bond. Uh, because I was asked to review it. And uh, so I, all delay on this item has been on mine and Alicia's side.
Hopefully the city's not paying for that, for that uh, tuition. The learning curve.
What was that?
Hopefully the city's not paying for that uh, that, that tuition, or actually say learning curve. Right?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so uh, yeah, so let's go now, this is the next agenda then, and it sounds like. We have consensus, so unless there's anything else, I think we're good to move on. Okay, Bill, back to you. Thanks.
Thank you, um, okay, so I guess the other thing I wanted to just kind of bring up with you all is. Um, we have a, we're back to having, there it is, let me move my. We're back to having um, kind of a, well, now that we've kind of waited through budget process, um. We, we're back to having kind of a, a, a robust list of topics um, for you all to take up. And I guess I just kind of wanted to get a, a little bit of direction in terms of where some of the more immediate high priority stuff is, so that I can kind of. Lay out. Um, it's going to be summer months. Um, and so, you know, we're, we have to kind of factor that in in terms of, you know, um, people being here, not being here, that sort of thing. But the big topics that um, you all have raised, that we want to kind of try to schedule work sessions and, and joint sessions with, with body, with your boards and committees, that sort of thing. Um, public comment process. Um, do, would you like to have online public comment uh, rules be changed so that. Um, people have until six PM, for instance, um, if they want to make online comments to verify with the city recorder that they would like to make. Online comment, right now it's three o'clock. Um, and maybe that needs to be six or a different timer or what have you, but that. Um, and then kind of this generally review public comment process, that was a, that was something, um, you, you, you all heard some interesting. Um, the topic of agrihoods, um, the, the marriage of, of a more agricultural um, oriented or interfaced approach to housing. And housing and housing development. We've pursued getting information and finding about um, at the very least, a couple of projects in Oregon and who might be able to. At some point come and talk to you all, and maybe that, you know, kind of talk about what the experience has been and, and what they do. And then we also have some research going on to some examples outside of the state of Oregon, that those two projects worked at. Um, and uh, kind of as models, so we're, we're still pulling that in, but. At some point during the summer, we'd like to chat with you about all that. The conversation about a park district extending beyond the city limits, um, is it legal, what's the feasibility of it, what's the process look like? Uh, that was something. URA focus adjustment, we were just talking, I talked to Council President about that, about, we actually have some. In the URA budget, you will be hearing, um, when you open your URA meeting, there's a lot of budget in there to do a lot of work. To extend and shift years. And um, add a bunch of new projects to the URA now that a bunch of them are done, within the Urban renewal agency. Emergency plan updates, working with the county on that. Uh, reviewing a process for council appointments. Um, a calendar for joint sessions with your boards and committees. Uh, we had some traffic issues, Brinell, uh, Timmerick, that we have been addressing, but kind of maybe talking about that was code. And then um, thank you, Council Redding, um, I did not ignore your email. But um, Council Redding did bring up very specifically, it would be a great idea. To grab the bull by the horns on public safety service levels and funding. With some kind of town hall as the kickoff of it, or as part of it. But um, a town, looking into a town hall opportunity to really kind of discuss that with the community. So. Those are kind of, those are a lot of big topics, um, and I guess I just kind of want to. Identify, you know. However you would like to identify, but what seemed to be the, the more burning. Issues. And then I can, you know, kind of, we can schedule accordingly to break this.
I think the public comment process should be pretty simple for us to figure out. Uh, that shouldn't take a whole lot of time. The town hall public safety service level funding. That's probably going to look like. A levy. Um. So that's got to go to ballot. Ballots come out in November. So you want to do that, that's probably going to take precedence as far as time goes.
Thank you, Council McCall Wallace, and then Counselor Redding.
Sure, um, in terms of public comment, and uh, I think there are a few things besides just the time, but I do think that that could be an agenda item, and does it need to be a work session? Um, the comment I wanted to make, but I think that it was not council appointments, but boards and commission appointments. And um, and um, also that we. Um. Agreed to meet for joint sessions in um. With the, uh, let's see, with the X dev.
In.
Mission in July and parks in August and. The library in September, so that we could look at some really specific kinds of things. Um, you know, talk about, make sure that we're aligned in terms of our goals. And also um, find out where, where they are in terms of all our city plans. If the downtown plan, the park plan, et cetera, and then also look at um. Any kind of future direction and those sorts of things, but I think it would be a good time then to talk about, you know, what, what is the appointment process? You know, before we look at changing the code, which could happen further after those.
Counsel Redding.
Not to, you know, go for my own, but if. Well, if we're seeking a levy or a water bill, we need to get the public's input, or I, I personally want to get the public input. Um, so I really, and, and so when do we, when you have to submit that for. Uh, the vote. And that's where I'm saying, that's my time pressure for us to do this, I guess.
Well, you keep, right, so for a November election, it needs to be August, and for a May election, it needs to be January, February, something like that, so. I, I, I guess the main thing though is, what I don't want to do is, is impress upon any. A sense of pressure about it, because it's, it's a process. So if you, even if you targeted it, you know, May of twenty. You, you know, you, I, I guess what we want to do is figure out kind of what the target date would be, and then back out a process. But I guess, but what I don't want to do is, is, my intention is not to put pressure on a particular. Outcome or a tax or anything like that, because it, it, it's, it's a process, I mean. Um, you're going to want to probably have a, and some kind of ad hoc committee. Of folks who are interested and want to be out, go out and be the champions. Evangel, evangelist, whatever, whatever term you like to use, but you're going to want to, you know, have, have a group of, of residents actively involved in that, working with you and, and helping the effort, so. It's a process. Um, but we can, we can get going on it, I, but I don't want to. You know, put a sense of pressure about a particular date on you is the main thing.
But my concern is if we go for the levy, we don't see that money till the next October.
Right, so um, no matter what happens with any tax level, you don't see anything coming in until November of any particular year, whether, whether it's a May levy. Um, yeah, I mean, if you go out to, if you go on the ballot in, in November, you won't see revenue for twelve months. But if you go on the ballot in May, you'll see the revenue five months later, six months later. So i- i- I think it, it's a ma- I think the issue is, is picking dates and, and, and working towards that.
Hold on, let me, let me grab Counselor Hagan or Counselor Payton first, I want to make sure everybody talks. And then we'll come back, Counselor Hagan.
I lost my thoughts.
We'll, we'll get, come back to you, Counselor Payton, any thoughts on this?
You know, I think they're all competing priorities, and. I would say I do agree that public comment is something that we can likely just do in a, an actual agenda item. Uh. I do also want to echo Counselor Redding's um, sense of urgency regarding potentially uh, holding a town hall to discuss public safety and funding. And I think uh. The other third one that I think that we could likely visit um, in a work session would maybe be the URA and um, just thinking about that. Sunsetting and, and really putting that at the forefront as well, just to do um, time sensitive nature of that.
Yeah, Counselor Goodwin.
Okay, um.
And then Counselor.
It came back to me, uh, thank you. So we talked as an outcome, I don't, I can't remember if it was the budget sea- season that we needed to revisit. Or do an follow-on kind of strategic visioning that had a little bit of emphasis on fiscal. Sustainment, and I think that having a robust strategy would help to inform a lot of the stuff that were thrown at the bo- the wall. And I think that we should probably um, had a serious thought on that as well.
Counselor McCall Wallace.
Yeah, I agree with that as well, I want to just kind of go down that list really quick, because I think that, um, rather than bouncing them all back and forth. Um, I feel like the public comment process could be something that we handle on an agenda, I have a lot of work session. Aggravated work session, park district feasibility, legality, another work session. URA focus adjustment, the same, um, in terms of the emergency plan updates, a lot of that is just getting the right means and position and onto the sheet. And I think that is a staff piece that comes onto us as an agenda item, that if we needed to do more work on it at that point, we could. Um, and reviewing boards and commissions, I think makes sense after we've had our meetings with them. Um, traffic, Brinell and Timmerick is actually a staff issue that's already in play by planning, staff, police, et cetera. It's not really a council issue, from my perspective. And the town hall of public safety service level funding. I think it's having a town hall. Sooner rather than later, to say, what do you want to do? Because. If, if we don't have the drive to move forward with that, we don't need to be back planning from a levy. Perspective, if that's not where the community wants to go, so we need to have the community conversation. And whether that's town halls and surveys and a variety of communication information that goes out so that we can be informed. In terms of how we should approach that one.
Before I call on Counselor Hagan, I want to ask a couple of questions. This is just me thinking out loud for me, apologize. I wondered. If things like the agrihood and parks, i- if the agrihood would be a good joint work session with. Planning Commission, because I would also like their input on these things. I also wonder, and this again, if I'm wrong, like, you guys don't have to agree, I'm, this is just me thinking out loud for me. But I also wonder if the Parks District, um, which I know is going to come up twice, if that's something we have in a work session with Parks. And just ask, you know, have staff get some info, and may, or maybe Parks gets, I don't, just make this up at this point, but maybe that's something that. We have during those work sessions that we've already kind of put on the calendar, uh, and if I'm wrong, um, that's okay, I'm just trying to think. Uh, the URA, I. Agree could be a work session, I just, maybe that's what EDC then, may, maybe that's how we handle that, I mean, may, maybe we're, we, we can. Include, I want to say lean on, could include our, our boards and commissions a little bit, and let them. Come up with ideas and will help set the policies a little bit more. And they can kind of help us, but I do agree, we need to get the plan together, and we also need to, uh, I talked with Bill, where he is working on getting somebody to help us with the URA vision as well. Um, the other thing is, I agree, we probably need to let this traffic thing play out with staff, and then we can create policy as needed. But I do have a lot of concerns around the funding, so. And I don't know what the difference between town hall and work session is, so it's my bad, but um, whatever that needs to look like, I think we should do that soonish. Because I think that. We as a city need to make some decisions. And the sooner that we have the conversation, the sooner we can figure out what direction we as a city want to go, Counselor Hagan.
Want to piggyback off of your comment on the funding and the funding and town hall. Um, I think that there's multiple pathways that we could proceed to figure out that expected outcome. Um, and Surface, we have an expert here in Maryland that could also do a uh, a pulse test with the community, and. We could do a, you know, one or two of the survey.
An agenda item to make a plan for all of those, like what we would want for to cover that issue, you know, that we want to have a.
Which issue, sorry, the town hall?
With the public service levels in a town hall, so, do we want to have a town hall, do we want to have a survey, do we want it to go in the newsletter, do we want to have X number Facebook posts? How do we want to get the community's response? Based on the question, so that we can form a plan. To deal with their response.
Okay, clarifying questions. Is that an agenda item, or is that something we can just get consensus on today, and I'm fine, I'm good either way, I'm just asking a question, I don't have a good answer yet.
We get this on it today.
Say, say again?
We get consensus t- uh, today to get consensus of that way, we don't need a, agenda item for that one.
So, I mean, what, what's the consensus on that?
We all seem to, we all seem to agree they want to do a town hall and get public. We want, what we're doing is uh, the, the funding for public safety. To talk about that. So you want to get that, we want to get the wheels of motion for that one, that's what we're all trying to say, right?
So I guess my question is, do we, i- it, it seems like what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, hold on. Seems like what I'm hearing is, we would like to have staff. Put together a town hall or something, and then we'll figure out the dates and go make it happen, but I could be wrong, Counselor McCall.
Like, that's not what I'm saying, um, I, we do want to do that, I agree, but I think we want to have a more comprehensive plan. And so I think it could have, unless we want to have the discussion now. To make an attempt to, to say, here's the direction we want to have, we want to make sure we're doing a Facebook survey, a Facebook post. Uh, we want to make sure that we're doing, uh, that, when that's going to appear in this newsletter, we want to see it, you know, here's a communications plan to make this happen. Rather than, we just want to have a town hall, or we just want to have a survey, or have it be random, we don't have a date defined that we want this to happen in, we don't know exactly which components we want to have. Um, so I feel like it's a discussion.
Counselor, do you have to make a suggestion? Twice.
Suppose.
I'm sorry. I, what if I put something together and bring it to you? With ideas, and you can say, that sounds good, or that doesn't sound.
Make, make it a staff report.
It's, we would direct that through Bill, so would, should we direct this through Bill, have you heard enough to kind of have an idea of what we're looking for? That I'm fine with that.
Okay, any other comments, thoughts, does this make sense? Right direction?
What is not on there, and I don't want it lost, because we already discussed it, and we already approved it, um, and we already notified the other boards and commissions. Is that we would be doing joint meetings with them in July, August and September, and so those need to be on the calendar for all of us. And for them.
The screaming, consensus, yes, good, okay. I'll take that as consensus, so we get that on the calendar.
They, they already are, like, the EDC is not having their July meeting, instead they're replacing it with your work session, and same with um, parks. They're not having their August meeting because of garden festival, and so they will be having a work session at your second meeting in August.
Solving problems are crazy. Love it. All right, so um, it, so it seems like uh. We've given Bill the, the guidance that we want in the town hall, he's going to work with um, with communications on that. And it seemed like, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like we have consensus that the rest of those become work sessions within the. Boards and commissions that they are. With. Counselor McCall Wallace and Counselor Redding.
I know, but unless you're all of those, like the emergency plan, et cetera.
Well, but.
But I, I do look forward to seeing them on this calendar, so that we can prepare ahead of time for when they're showing up.
I would just say, I really like your idea of giving. Um, like, the agrihoods in the Park District to one of our committees to make a recommendation, like have them really dive in. Get the presentation and then bring it forward to us, versus a work session on this. Because if, hey, find right there the best on our recommendation. We don't need to go further, really.
Counselor Payton.
Um, just to play devil's advocate, um, I do think that there's some value in, in potentially having. Other boards and commissions involved and, and kind of vetting those presentations, however. The pause I give is that, let's say, boards and commission, you know, planning commission says, yes, full steam ahead with agrihoods. Um, that's going to require additional staff time to sit through an, another presentation potentially, so that this board could then learn about it. So I would just be curious of, you know, could we, could we go ahead and commit to a work session so that we can all receive the information? So I would just be curious of, you know, could we, could we go ahead and commit to a work session so that we can all receive the information at the same time?
Well, so my question then is, what I was wondering is, could we do those as a joint? Because no decisions can be made in a work session. Works out great, so we can get all the information, we can go away. And then they can come back and deliberate, but then we're already starting at the one hundred level, and then they can bring us up to the. Up to the whatever, down, whatever it is, you know what I mean? The next level, is what I'm trying to get at. It just seems like it would save some time, everybody gets in the room, we get all the information, we, everybody can hear, public can hear and then. They can go back and make a recommendation and then they bring it to us, we actually know what they're talking about. Right, exactly, and then if we need to further put it out to whatever, then we do, but yeah. Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, um Bill, did I miss anything here? Are we good?
But they were good, thank you.
Thanks, that was great. All right, um. Bill, still you?
Um, no, I think that's probably good, so thank you.
All right, um I believe, oh, and uh. City attorney had a staff report, yes.
For the agenda item?
Yeah, do you wanna do that or should I do the board, the boards and commissions, so?
Let's do this first, cuz I think that might inform some of that. Uh, okay. So Ashley just spoke to the city attorney's office, um we added an agenda item for tonight to consider uh mayor's request for extended medical leave. On Friday at around eleven A M. Um the mayor emailed the council and app and said, it's become clear that my medical condition of recovery. Require me to be away from town for more than thirty days. In accordance with the city's requirement, I'm formally requesting the council consent to continue my absence for medical reasons. Uh by way of some background on this issue. As many of the, many of you may know and the council's aware, under the city's charter section thirty two, the council can declare an elected official's office vacant. For a limited number of reasons. One of those reasons is that the official is absent from the city for more than thirty days without council consent. Or from all council meetings within a sixty day period. So unlike other types of vacancies that can be um that can be activated under the charter, this type of vacancy does not happen automatically. Instead, the council has to take an official action, which is a vote to declare the seat open. So again, that is under um section thirty two of the charters under vacancies. And just to be explicitly clear about that. If the council declares a seat vacant, it means the elected official is no longer in office. So although the charter doesn't provide any guidance for when the council should give consent. Um to request for a long absence, the council rules does provide some parameters regarding what the council is agreed to regarding excused versus unexcused absence. So under your council rules, it provides that attendance at council meetings is expected of all members of the city council. Who should use their best efforts to attend all city council meetings. Members of the city council are expected to attend at least seventy five percent of all council meetings in any consecutive twelve month period. Absences from the city for thirty days without council consent or from all council meetings within a sixty day period. May result in a declaration by the city council stating that the position is vacant. The council rules also provide excuse a um a list of absences that could be excused. Um one of them is for illness. So taken together, the charter and the council rules provide then an absence to attend to a personal injury illness, I'm sorry, is generally an excused absence. In the council, that could provide the basis for the council consent to the mayor being absent from the city and from city council meetings for a period of time. Neither the charter nor the council rules provide that any, provide any additional guidance on how many. Excuse absences is reasonable for each elected official, and instead that decision is left up to the council. So the only guidance is the thirty and sixty days under the city charter. Um. So my recommendation for the council is to grant the mayor's request for a leave of absence. Um address how the council should follow up with her regarding her planned return. Um my suggestion here is one line of the communication that the council delegate authority to one of its members. Um to work with the mayor in order to have a line of communication about her expected return. Uh when she'd be able to perform, um not just attending the council meetings, but. My assumption is, if she's not able to attend council meetings, she's also not attending any of any of the other meetings. Um that are assigned to her in her role. Um and then the council can discuss um with the mayor if she is participating or among the council, if mayor is unable to participate. How the city will cover the mayor's duties in her absence. Um one final note, you know, the mayor has requested a a thirty day leave of absence, that doesn't mean that any sort of council business. Um needs to conclude or be put on hold until her return. Items that directly impact her, for instance, the, for instance, the central moment. Motion, that is my recommendation that we put that one on hold until she comes back or regarding all other city business. Um the city council can feel free to move forward. Um so that is, I'll leave it to the council for discussion and questions.
So before I open it up, um I just wanna make a couple of comments. Um first off, as we're having this discussion, uh I'd like us all to remember that we're neighbors. And this is a very contentious, you know, difficult situation, um we should put the needs of the city first. But we should also remember that we're all neighbors and we should all try to act with grace and compassion. And with that, um I'm gonna open it up to the council for discussion, you heard the uh city attorney's recommendation, but um I'd like to hear from everyone, so Council Page, since you're online, would you? Like to speak up?
Usually, yes. Um so uh Ariel's on here, so I don't feel like I'm talking out of turn. Uh she hasn't been at a very many council meetings or done any other duties as far as mayor goes since she's been elected. Um. That being said. This is about ADA accommodations. And we have a duty as humans and legally to grant this, it's thirty days, that seems to be. Um. An okay accommodation. We have gone along with that for many meetings. Um. I don't think it's gonna hit hurt the city too much. Going forward, if you're listening, Ariel, I see you logged in, but you said you were gonna have your earthing off, but just gonna be listening intently. And hope you are. Please consider whether or not you wanna have the name of mayor. Or you actually wanna serve the city. Um. You haven't been present for many of the things that require mayor to do. Um. Some of the meetings you have have been drawn out and ineffective. Um. I do not wanna ask you to not be a mayor cuz you were elected. But I understand people elected somebody to become mayor and not just wear the title. Um. I'm hundred percent okay with giving you the thirty days to heal up. If you need more, let let us know. Your health is very important to us. However, I do want you to consider. The effect this is gonna have on the city and doing your job. That's what I have to say.
That's right.
Um I agree with the friends' recommendation.
Council McCollum.
Um yes, thank you. Um. So. I I certainly understand the issue of health issues coming up and and, you know, having to spend some time at first just figuring out. What's going on before you actually can treat what's going on, so um. You know, but it has been forty three days that since the five five meeting, made that meeting, the last one who was attended. Um or or the last, the first one requested for an absence, so um I believe. So, you know, that's, this this thirty days does take it beyond that sixty days, so it is a council approval in this situation. Um. And um I do think that that we should give the thirty days, I am for giving that thirty days forward to do that. However, I believe that we should have a point of checking in um by July fifteenth or sixteenth. Which is that thirty day period, so that if we need another item on the agenda, it can go on the following agenda for that Monday. Rather than it meets the timeline to make the agenda, rather than show up on Friday, have public announcements go out on. Saturday or Sunday and sort of driving a whole nother. Situation with it, rather than us being able to have that thoughtful discussion, because I think this discussion is also wrapped up. And a lot of information that flew around this weekend and today um through social media posts. And so um I would like us to sort of be able to fit it into the process, keep the the city informed, we haven't been very informed about. You know, whether it's gonna be a two week outage or a four week outage, those have shown up on Facebook, that's where I've seen them, um they didn't come directly to the city. So with that said, um yes, for the thirty days, I would like to have that check in and if it's one of us. It makes sense to me, the council president wanted to take that on. Um my other concern is that there are other meetings. There's the mayor's meetings, there's um. Just the group, the consortium of mayors, I don't know what that one's called, um and and the Washington County meetings and. And other type of other things that come up and um so. Which may be a lot to put on the council president to say, hey, take over this role and take over all those meetings, so if we need to divide those up. And so that we as counselors are committed to taking those on, I would hope that we do that today if this moves forward.
Council Hagan.
I'm aligned with the lawyer's recommendation.
Very legal, Council Payton.
Uh thank you, and I I genuinely hope that Mayor Goodwin is is okay. Um I guess my my just clarification for Ashley is. Is the the rolling timeframe of sixty days or even thirty days for that matter, does that start? From May fifth, when the first absence was reported from city council, or is this just from, you know, the state forward?
So the communication that I have seen is the request right now is that she is out of state. And what the charter requires is that when. A member of the council is physically absent for the, absent from the city for more than thirty consecutive days. They have to request consent from the city council, so that's my understanding of of what she's asking for today, she's saying she's in. Los Angeles and not able to, not outside of the city for thirty days, so that's one thirty day issue. The sixty days is an absence from si- all city council meetings for a period of sixty days. And that would be rolling, so an attendance tonight could um, you know, restart the sixty day clock.
Does that?
I'm sorry.
Just us logging in and being viewed count as as eh as attendance? Because she's not doing anything in an official capacity at all. As I like, you, cuz I have, I have Samsung on the list up here, does Samsung count as attending?
So that is a decision for the city council to make and that involves interpreting.
I don't know, James, does some of your feedback count as participating?
The feedback counts as participating as doing it eh as in a role, not just being um viewing.
All right, Council McCollum.
Yeah, I I I had a similar question, um just in terms of understanding participation. Um and that, uh you know, to to ask for uh. The votes to be um to not be able to vote, I think that requires a council approval ahead of time, not. Not that we're telling us there's going to be an extension, um you know, and I realize that. Certainly, you're not, you're probably not sitting there with a handbook of rules in the middle of all of this. Um but, you know, I think we are looking at thirty days and the forty two that have already happened. And so, you know, hopefully things will be in good shape and you'll be back and and we will have that. Moving forward, but I think that we should have a place where we can check in to ask those questions at that point.
Council Pippin coming back to you to answer your question, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think, um you know, again, I was just trying to think of like the end's timeframe, right, like where do we align and what is that, that checkpoint? Um. And so I I think I would just like to get clarity on on where is the the checkpoint uh for next steps.
At the end of thirty, yeah, thank you. Okay, so um I'll say, um I'll start with saying I agree with uh I support what the city attorney said. But with caveat. I think that this, this is an opportunity for us as a council to uh all of us reflect on how we should handle these things in the future. Um I think this this should have been disclosed to the voters personally, I think if there was concerns, it should have been disclosed. Um I think that's the ethical thing to do, but again, that's a personal decision. I also think, um you know, there's, there's some uh a lot of questions around council rules and this is where we get to. Uh have the the judgment of interpreting our own rules, part of being a quasi, just. By the judicial body with a lot of help from the city attorney. And I don't have the answer. But what I will say is, it seems like there is.
Um, yeah, we'll have a real.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call over the time comes, I think there is consensus, I think we'll, at some, in the, when we're done with this conversation, move forward with it. A motion if there is one, um but what I will say is, um. I agree, I think that there needs to be, there there does need to be a checkpoint, um and also I have some concerns over some of the meetings, so I've been taking. I have been taking, but I did Mac, obviously, cuz that was mine, but I took uh W C C and I will be taking. And pack, although I'm gonna, if I can get somebody to cover that one, uh it it would be helpful cuz I'm. Getting a little bit backed up, um so what I would like to suggest is, if we can, for the thirty day period, which. Assuming that would, actually assuming that would begin today. So from now until the fifteen, if we can kind of give you up, as Council McCollum said, this is something Ashley and I had discussed, I'm glad that came. Council.
I'm happy to take that into account.
Perfect, okay, well, hold on, we'll we'll get to that, sorry, um but yes, thank you. Um yes, if we can all kind of pitch in for a little bit until we figure this out, this is an unusual circumstance. Not ever going on a city council, but I can assume this doesn't happen every day, so. Say again?
It does not.
Yeah, so this is an unusual circumstance, so let's again try to approach this with grace, uh but also try to learn a lesson here on how we can follow. You know. Do this everything in the future. So that being said, yes, if we can start giving up some, um but I think we need to vote first.
Yeah, yeah, so if I could, um. If I could suggest a motion.
Thank you.
Um, uh, a motion to grant the mayor's request for a thirty day. Absence from the city and authorize the um council president to work with the city attorney. To follow up with the mayor regarding her return.
That was helpful.
So moved works.
Can we do that by July?
I actually would prefer, so when is our next city council meet, was it? City, city council meeting in July, so it's the seventh. Say it again?
The seventh and the twenty first.
Yeah, soon, um.
The fifteenth or the sixteenth does make it within that agenda, that time period for the point.
Yeah. So I would actually, maybe we can follow up more like July tenth to give it more time.
That makes more sense. Okay, so.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, I'll uh we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay. Council President Dumbrow?
Aye.
Council Fage?
Aye.
Council Hagedorn?
Aye.
Council Payton?
Aye.
Council Reading?
Aye.
Council McCall Wallace? The mayor's abstaining. Do I have to say that again?
Clarify, I believe the mayor's abstaining, give her a moment in case she wants to. Okay, maybe counter, is it an extension, loop, and then maybe the discussion on the meetings.
So let's move over to, oh, sorry, do you have a comment?
No, I mean, I know we need to do that too, but I have a question on the sixty days. It's just left out there hanging at this moment, whether that counts or not, and whether, you know. Not participating in the meeting or pre sending in your votes counts as participating in the meeting or. Or what, so, you know, are we starting the point now? In the sixty days, or are we looking at this being the second half of sixty days?
I I I agree, we should probably make this motion to, because it's been over si- this is over sixty days. So he's already passed that date, so we should probably make the motion to include this one into our grace period.
So I don't think it's actually been passed the sixty days, I believe, but I heard it's forty three, forty two days.
The the last meeting that she attended was on April twenty first.
Okay, so. A follow up regarding the email that she said sending in her votes early, you cannot vote by proxy. And so when we had a, we had a discussion with the mayor, she understood that if she was going to vote. You know, she needed to provide real time um voting, so. You know, because of the sensitivity of this issue, gave a bunch of options regarding either emailing or texting in the vote, if that's how she chose to do it. Um it is unusual to have her present at the meeting but not participate in the votes. Again, accommodating the issue, allowing for an abstention, giving her an opportunity to vote because she is here. So again, um making some modifications to our process in order to accommodate. Uh regarding whether or not the attendance at this level this evening qualifies as being present. At a meeting is a matter of interpretation under your guise's charter and your council rules. Um I can provide some follow up information on choices, um. Um I can provide some follow up information on choices, um given that I now understand what the facts are.
This, in my opinion, is not a meeting, just logging in and like, you know, listening in. I mean, you could that, in that case, you go watch YouTube if you had a meeting, right?
I I get my concern and I think what we would want direction on is that at at the point of July fifteen, sixteen. Are we at thirty days, are we at sixty days, and are we looking at another thirty days or potentially ninety days? And so what what where are we as a council, so that we're not to say, I don't know what that decision would be, we're not there. And then we're not at that point at all, but that we be aware of what decisions lay before us.
Yeah, I would just point out that this thirty days is for presence in the city. So regarding if you're gonna leave town for an extended period of time, as city council, you need to ask for consent. That is, you know, my understanding is that's the question that she's out of town, she's seeking. Um treatment out of town, I'll be out of town for thirty days and ask for council consent.
Well, that's one.
The sixty days is you cannot not attend city council meetings for a sixty day period. So those are, you know, separate counts, but what I understand your question is is where are we with both of those counts? And if that is your professional, provide guidance on that, thank you.
And also the seventy five percent rule too, uh we have a seventy five percent in a total running year, now we haven't been a year yet. But there is math involved to determine what is seventy five percent or not, and whether seventy five percent is attainable. So that's also uh something we may want to discuss, but we can probably discuss seventy five percent later on.
Alright, so I think I think at this point, um city attorney has stated she'll uh follow up on that. So I think that is a good place to leave that discussion and we will offer to provide us guidance and then we will have a conversation about that. So, acceptable everyone? Alright, so let's go through the schedule, so um. Let's see, uh councillor Redding volunteered for Parks and Rec on the four.
Plan for planning, you said planning on the. Right, planning on the July ninth, yeah, that's what I read.
Planning commission, Goodwin, seven, Ashley.
Okay, Eric, you're right. My mistake, okay, great, thank you. See, Washington County Coordinating Committee, I am secondary, so I'll take that, we need to correct that. Actually, so is Counselor Page, although he's welcome to go too.
She would point order. You're looking at the planning commission is seven nine and councillor Dumbero was scheduled for that. County uh mayor Goodwin is scheduled for Parks and Rec on July fourteen.
But but the good news is on this calendar, my name is there, so I think that was my vote, but you can.
On.
On this July calendar.
Two different ones.
But I'll be more unhappy to to think of.
The parks one?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you don't need to worry about planning, because unless councillor Dumbero is gonna miss it.
Oh, I'll do planning, I have questions.
What with this with this defending?
So the ninth, I I no, we're we're good for planning, it's seven nine, I'll be there.
Alright.
I think we just got confused on some things, um what I would ask is if, let's, this one. Uh if somebody can cover impact on the twenty third.
Yeah, that'd be me.
Okay, Counselor Page covering impact.
Please send a note, Larry.
I think that's good, that's the meetings for now, the other thing is there are some events that I believe, if I understand correctly. Would normally be attended by the mayor um or other counselors, so I believe there's an event in banks for League Oregon Cities, if anybody's available. Counsel Redding's on it.
July twenty third, the mayor should be back.
That's a good point.
It's July twenty third in banks?
I'm sorry, you're right, my mistake, thanks counselor. Um, okay, so forget forget what I said about impact, um but yeah, so so there is the uh the League Oregon Cities uh Small Cities Event. And then anything else, Bill, if you can just. Maybe D C C the council so we don't mess anything up, but.
Yeah.
I I know you sent a bunch of them, but just. Keep keep it coming and if if you can pitch in, just let Bill know so that we can make sure that we cover these for now.
I, no, thank you, no, I, for what it's worth, I'll just throw my two cents in. I would just underscore the importance of covering their Washington County Coordinating Committee meetings, that's all the mayors in Washington County.
Wait, uh oh, that one, oh.
And funding and and funding, funding issues come up at the county level, the state level where the mayors coordinate. And so that one's actually, that one actually really is a key one to cover.
Oh, yeah, that one, I actually have counsel.
Counselor Fage is the backup on that.
Me, we changed it at the first meeting.
Not to not to not to up down the importance of other. But like that one.
I was there, I actually have some notes for you, sorry.
Cool, no, no, it's all good.
I, it was.
Is that the one that they said you couldn't attend?
No, that was just the Washington County Mayor's Association, I don't, I forget what it was. There's a lot of meetings thrown, so, alright, so we'll make that work for now.
Want to make sure they're.
Yes, we we'll we'll cover.
That being the mayor requires a lot of work.
Yes, being mayor does require a lot of work, this is why I don't ever want to be the mayor, just kidding.
Maybe shouldn't run.
Alright, so that's it, actually, oh, council reports, I'm sorry.
Can I say thank you, and and for everyone's contribution in on that, and also, um you know. Well wishes to Ariel in this process for the thirty days, so.
Agreed, alright, council report, so let's just uh let's go on like, babe, what do you got, council reports? Counselor Fage.
I have nothing.
Alright, that's fine, I have to just make it sure you had an opportunity.
I attended the E D C on June fourth. Um unfortunately, a lot of it had to be rescheduled, uh the guest speaker. Um and I think Bill was unfortunately ill that day, um so they missed that piece, or I missed that piece as well. Um they're also canceling their July second meeting um in favor of a work session. And they're hoping that their August meeting can be at the new Kendall Public Works building, and I'm rooting that hopefully that can happen.
Yeah, I I didn't spring that on uh city manager yet. Waiting till after the budget was approved, uh took the pressure off, so it's a small. The library sales will be here.
But what we did cover was, um they didn't, they only have one response to their business survey, so they're gonna pause the survey. Um to a future meeting and maybe look at how to get um some more responses. Um they are thinking about a work session with us to help increase marketing. And they, I kind of got the feeling that public works and finance are taking priority over the communications higher from them. That was just kind of the feeling I got, but I don't, I mean, their feeling.
Thank you, Council McCollum.
Sure, um I was the alternate for Council Pippin for the Washington County Office of Community Development Office. Group, I think, um so they updated their bylaws and there was uh some allocations for two. Um affordable housing projects, one of which has been tigered, um that was approved. And they selected new chair and vice chair for the committee, I did not nominate councillor. Uh but, yes, but Chair Harrington um was there and afterwards shared some information. And a slide deck from the Washington County Commissioners Meeting that I wanted to share, but I think it's relevant to us as well. Um they had a large discussion because of at at test they can language. That was being attached to certain contracts and the changes in that, and it was. Um hundred thirty, hundred and thirty million dollars of federal funding that they need to change the language. Um in order to receive this funding and very difficult decision, um it sounded like. And that funding would go, the loss of funding is they did not do that, would affect the C D D G projects. Uh the high rental assistance transportation projects, um with and many maternal. Um child and family services, uh climate resilience planning, preparedness services. And prevention in response to uh communicable diseases and bias and hate crimes. Uh what they did have to add at this point, and they did also recognize on the slide deck, I can see. Their meeting, you can see it online, um is that they uh. Um are also, you know, organized in many litigations with the federal government right now about these things. So um they're not going to use federal funding to promote diversity, equity and inclusion. Mandates, policies, programs or activities that violate any applicable federal discrimination laws. And they will not use grant funds to promote any kind of gender of ideology. And um defending women from that and they ran a uh. So they ran a a a quick check in their um system and in the language, and I think it came up with fifteen. Thousand hits of words that that hit that, so. Um but I did want to share that, that that is a step that the Washington County Commissioners took. In order to receive that funding for the county and wanted us to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Higdon.
Um last uh week on Monday, I have the opportunity to attend the Parks and Rec meeting. Um time was spent discussing um their goal number four, which focuses on. The design and managing a part of park system that is built on efficiency to while maintaining capital investments. Um and we also spent a little time discussing how uh success would be defined for this call. Uh underneath business, the committee discussed and has interest in um learning more about the lake property proposed into the. U G B expansion and the new aggregate proposal I informed them that there's a work session coming up. Um they're excited to attend that, um there was extended conversation on community outreach techniques, key topics. The committee decided to create an opportunity project list to involve their growing group of volunteers. Um they're preparing a quarterly update to brief the council on soon. Um there was a discussion on the deployment of the recently um approved rent abatement form. In particular, who has the R for uh decision making, that may need conversation, though it looks like you've already heard that one. Um and then last, and then lastly, the um committee was also briefed on the uh the new dog park. Uh that popped up and that the city is working on investing. Often things.
Perfect, Council Pippin.
I will keep mine short and sweet, uh the the stars have aligned and I have not had any ex officios. Um and thank you to Council McCall Wallace for attending Policy Advisory Board um last week. And I will be attending the Library Board on Wednesday and will report back next meeting. I I will be in attendance um Wednesday at the League of Oregon Cities um in banks.
Alright, so I, Washington County Coordinating Committee, um lots of stuff on climate action plan, it's mostly mass transit focused, um. There's a lot of push for mass transit in metro, so just be aware, um I know this is a particular favorite of Counselor Page in mind, so um. Coming to a neighborhood near you, the discussion of mass transit. Yes. See, um uh if you don't like your gas prices. You're not gonna like the tax increase that's coming from Washington County, making this more palatable, um they are looking at increasing that gas. Gas tax prices, vehicle purchase taxes, E V tax, payroll tax increase for triment. Um so there are a lot of taxes going in, uh obviously, there's a lot of funding challenges at the county level, so just be aware. Um this is again why it's important for us to have our conversations now, because um. It's gonna be a fun year, that was Washington County Coordinating Committee, Ben. Mac. So Comcast did some community service stuff, that was awesome, we uh elected officers. I did not volunteer, Council Pippin either, because she's not on board, sorry, my bad. Um we are starting to see the Mac uh budget. Tighten up a little bit, let's just say, so um without an additional source of funding from these, uh Mac's. Gonna have some financial challenges, we did have part of a conversation with the executive director, why that is my role now. Uh about what we are gonna do going forward, um. Peg, P E G and P C N grants, oh, I want to ask you about this, um do we apply for something?
Um let me check which cycle, we usually do it by every cycle.
Okay, um there was a couple of grants, but I did not see her name on there, I just want to clarify that, Bill, I I remember we had talked, but. Lost track of where we'll report that, um let's see, production's doing a lot of great stuff, um. There was a possibility that the Mac production team can come out here and do some. Commercial, I guess, oh god, um so that's something we could look into if the council's interested or if the staff or whoever wants to talk about that. Um I just thought I'd bring it up in case anybody's interested. Um we are extending the Comcast franchise for one year, so we voted to do that so that we can um. Negotiate uh the new uh franchise agreement, um and it is retroactive, so once it's approved, uh it'll. Will get paid whatever the new fee structure is hopefully hired. Um Lumen and Zipley are causing us some fund challenges in the state legislature, uh trying to pass bills to change franchise fees. And we did discuss the Zipley franchise termination, which council should be aware at this point, um Zipley's. It doesn't affect us, they're uh they are terminating some franchises uh outside of the city of North Plains and. Uh we're currently working with Labor Council to determine. Recourse, I guess, so nothing really for us, but just stuff to be aware of, that this is what's going on in neighboring communities. Um and that's about, oh, and then I did have two more things, so I did have a couple of. Just to be transparent, not as a counselor, by the way, just as a neighbor, I did go and meet with some of our neighbors and just asked a lot of questions to understand more. I encourage you, if you have time to do it, it's it's enlightening, people with different ideas give you different perspectives. I don't know if anybody changed my mind, but at least I learned some stuff, so I'll say that, and then also I'm gonna be out on the seventh, because it's my anniversary and um. Trying really hard to prioritize that, so uh I'll work with Bill and Ori on who's gonna run the meeting, but I know you guys are all confident. I just told, nobody throws a gavel on me, or if you do, I'll watch it again.
Way to you, Matt.
Thank you, that's perfect, um and with that, I think we're at the end. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
A public comic forward, um asking for a specific request of the council. And in terms of do we have any space for the food bank, and I know that um. That that the food bank has come before for other questions, but this is a very specific one. Is this something we can look at, and I don't know, this would be a question, develop, you know, I don't, I understand that there's not really space. But to have a response go back to um to uh the step timer. Is that?
Yes.
I mean, it just, it it comes in, but I think that we need to somehow respond, you know, in some way, so.
I think Bill already did.
Yeah, it's gonna, I thought we had a response, didn't we respond, or thought we had a conversation?
Um, well, I think, I think, I think what I did was I reached out to you all, being emailed to kind of let you. Let you know what is available to the city and 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 just to be clear, the 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 yellow house, building the yellow house. Um it it has serious repair issues, water leak, doesn't have water service.
Damn it, yeah.
It's waiting to be bulldozed, basically, so I I I really, really hesitate to, he's been offered that as a short term. Yeah, so.
I think that's the answer, I think the answer is we don't at this point have a space, unfortunately, and.
And 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 not that anybody asked me. But uh. If I were to be asked, I would say there's other areas that have established food banks. That could probably use whoever support. In helping them. Uh maybe align with another food bank and offer your resources and try to work in North Plains into that area. That's how I would do it.
Council McCollum.
Yeah, I think this is, in my mind, is just a specific quest, request, does this city have a building? And if we could have the city manager respond to the request, um sort of putting the full circle on that one. Uh if that's the council's consensus.
Council.
I'm aligned. We will go over it next time.
Okay, seems like we have consensus, so if you can just. So convey the councils. And the city, I guess, whichever one, councils or the cities, oh. Um okay, anything else? Alright, we are then adjourned at nine sixteen.